Good evening, welcome to the October 19th, 2015, regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a work session and a closed meeting on September 21st. Regular meeting on September 21st and a work session and closed meeting on October 5th. And a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Seconded.
So moved and seconded. Any additions or corrections to those minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before we go on to our recognitions, we've got one amendment to our agenda this evening. Lenny?
So I would like to make a motion to remove 6D, the annual report on professional learning, from the agenda.
All of us, do I have a second?
So moved. Second.
We're just moving it, just moving to discussion or action, or it's just coming off?
Just removing it, deferring it, tabling it.
So it would be a request to go to action, it's a motion to remove. So this is a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of removing the consent item, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, we have amended the agenda, and now we're on to our recognition. Rick?
At this time, I'd like to call up Bill Webb. Bill was recently given a very prestigious award in the upper Midwest, literally, Schmidt Music Director of the Year Award. And, Bill, it's an honor that this award rolls your way, but it's most deserving. And you've had numerous awards, where does this rank in the things that you've accomplished and people have called you out for your great work?
Well, even before I answer your question, I'd like to mention, which I don't think you even know, that Doug Schmidt, excuse me, Tom Schmidt is here from Schmidt Music, and Tom and his brother Doug are, run the Schmidt Music Company right now. And it was very gracious of them to join us today. And I tell you, there are, to be the first recipient of this award, and when it covers such a broad area, is really truly an honor. And I feel blessed and humbled by the award because I have experienced a lifetime in this career of seeing phenomenal work. And I see it right here in our own school system, but I also have seen it across the state and in the region. And so to be nominated, period, is wonderful. And then to receive the award is, I'm truly, truly humbled.
Well, I know you're deserving, and I think the amazing thing that I recognize is your ability to teach. I mean, because you have reached all levels, you've reached that high professional level, you've taught at the collegiate level, obviously you were a key player at the high school level and through those middle years, but now, your most recent experience was at the elementary. What's the common theme that you saw, and what drove your passion to have such a reach? I mean, so often we see people and they really want to zero in on an area, but not Bill Webb.
I feel blessed that I have, for whatever reason, have the right personality to be able to reach out and really truly enjoy, you know, I think a lot of people, when I left the high school position, thought, you know, what in the world is he doing? That's, it truly is one of the finest high school band positions anywhere. And the timing was right, and I knew that the program was going to be in good hands, and I also knew, because I had had an opportunity to teach at all levels, that I would enjoy the elementary level every bit as much. And as I keep telling people, and I spent the last five years in the elementary level, but they're the same great young people, they're just younger. They want it every bit as bad, they work every bit as hard, they come in with the same spirit and drive and desire. And you can see it in their daily work, you can see it in their face, you can see it in their body, how passionately they want it. And so it's not a matter of as big a change as some people might think, you're still working with outstanding young people. And I've also been fortunate and blessed to have it, whether it's elementary or middle, I've taught in most of the schools here in the district over the years. Taught at the collegiate level, and then also have my hands for the last 30 years in the adult bands with the Minnesota Symphonic Winds.
And I know in your application process, you talked about your passion, and your passion was around music and around life. And life has not always been kind to Bill Webb, most recently, and you have not shown that. Two things I want you to comment on is, one is, I know this hasn't been, any of your work in education has not been a role that you've taken on alone, because Susan has been your partner, and she was so much a part of the band program here at Edina High School that we are hoping that paycheck was floating her way versus your way. But through this past-
A lot of it did.
I understand that.
A lot of it did.
But if you could talk to that partnership and that role that she's played in this, but also just about your life journey over these past six months.
Let me frame this a couple different ways. First of all, from the family's standpoint, I feel extraordinarily fortunate to have grown up with parents who were both in education. My mother was a social worker for the Minneapolis Schools, and I saw her dedication to helping some of the people who in this world need extraordinarily, extraordinary help. And my father was a professor at St. Thomas College, and through them, I really gained an appreciation, not only for the honor that it is to be an educator, but also the fact that it's going to be a demanding life for you, that you do devote a lot of it. And then, when, I have a wife like Sue, and a family who have been so supportive of my endeavors, and how time-consuming this job is, and understanding that and being so incredibly supportive, it allows me as an educator to do the best for the community. And without someone like Sue standing behind you, supporting you all the way, it just would never happen. And I might also say, when we moved here, our two children were very young, Corinne and Andrea. And in fact, Corinne is off at med school at the UNO, and Andrea's just getting her PhD from Madison, and just got a teaching job actually, as an associate professor down at Iowa State. But they, we could not have been more pleased with the education that they had coming through the Edina School. So for everyone that thanks me for, you know, the little piece that I've had, and I'm always reminding people, it really does take a village, and we've seen it firsthand with our own children coming through this, and I am so eternally grateful for what this program has brought our family. It's that rising tide that lifts all ships, and, you know, everyone does their own little bit, and everyone else stands a little taller and a little prouder. And I've seen that in our family and in this community, always.
So how about your life journey is, the last six months, if you can just address that, I know people would appreciate that.
You never know where life takes you. And I went from feeling on top of the world, taking no medications, swimming three days a week and loving it, loving life and planning to teach for another half dozen years, to unusual set of circumstances, and even the doctors at Mayo who I see on a regular basis don't understand it. But I took three fluoroquinolone pills, three prescribed for sinus infection. And the three pills combined with, and it was Levuquin, combined with the Prednisone, that was a steroid that was also prescribed, were a very bad combination for me, and can be for many, many people. I'm in different groups online and then throughout the Twin Cities that I never wanted to be part of, but you are now, and you can, since you don't know where life is going to take you, my perspective on, has always been one of, you know what, I am so grateful that my head is strong, that I have good movement in my upper body. And I'm in every single day, either at Sister Kenny, I was there this morning, or at LA Fitness, working at least an hour a day trying to get, learn how to walk again. And really, I, when I say that I feel blessed, I feel blessed on so many different levels, and all it takes is wheeling in like I did at Sister Kenny this morning, to realize, you know, that every family, and it doesn't matter where you go, every family has their own challenges. And there are a lot of people in this world who have challenges far greater than I do. You know, some of the people that, I had a former student who called me and said, "Mr. Webb, could we meet my sisters going through the very same thing that you're going through?" And she was a 23-year-old, she sat in her wheelchair, in Edina grad, sat in her wheelchair right next to mine, and she was going down to Mayo at the same time I was, and she was having these, every half hour seizures that would, for five minutes at a time. So it affects people of all ages, and part of my new educational path is not only to remind people to be, just be careful with prescription drugs, and, you know, even the doctors, as great as they are, and as much as we do know, there's a lot we don't know yet. And so be, just to be careful, particularly with the fluoroquinolone drugs, but also to be aware that the human spirit is very resilient. And that if, in fact, one of the Concord fifth grade teachers, Maria Graver, emailed me earlier and said, you know, "One of the words they're working on this year is resiliency. Would you mind coming in and talking to the fifth graders about resiliency?" And I said, "I would be happy to." And I think that is, there's a resiliency in all of us that we sometimes don't understand until we have to. And it's great to, it's not great to necessarily be in these positions, but I'm thankful for what I do have, and there was even, if I can remember the quote from Hubert Humphrey that I thought was really a wonderful quote, it was something to the effect of, "It's not what they, it's not what they take away from you, it's what you do with what you have left." And I thought that was, what a wonderful quote. So it's about resiliency.
Bill Webb, you're the ultimate educator, and we congratulate you. Sue, I'd like you to come forward and ask Schmidt, representative also, to come forward to-
Actually, both of them.
Yep, come forward.
Paul Thompson and also Tom Schmidt.
Both of them. And then Regina Neville's representing the board on this recognition tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the district, the board, the district, all our kids, you mean a lot.
Well, I really deeply appreciate that, and as I mentioned, I understand it too, because our students, our children have that, we have that same passion for the, we have that same passion for the educators who have helped our young people too, our families, so, thank you.
It's a good village.
It is. Yeah, and maybe I can introduce the two of these people. First of all, Tom Schmidt is, along with his brother Doug, now runs Schmidt Music. They cover, well, in fact, they can probably tell you much better than I can what their company does, but they were the ones-
How much time do we have?
And then Paul Thompson, who has been our, one of our local reps here, and so I'll turn it over to them.
Just a couple of words, words about the award. I was involved with the kind of building of the questionnaire and how this worked, and so this was not a popularity contest by any means, this was really well-vetted, there were directors from all over the six-state area that were then sent in their applications, and was selected based on college professors who, their degrees are, or their emphasis is on music education. So for Bill to win this, it was a lot of really good candidates out there, but certainly was the most deserving, and so we're really proud of Bill and excited to be a part of his life and journey, so, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Paul. And Dr. Meyer, and ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the chance to say a few words to you tonight. I try to never waste an audience if I'm given an opportunity. I'm given an opportunity. And so I will say, first of all, that I graduated from this high school in 1971, both my wife and I did. And so walking through the front door of this building, which I do every two or three or four years, it's sort of a good thing these walls can't talk, for my sake. Great, it's just a great, unbelievably wonderful district, and I know that you all know that, and one of the reasons that it's so outstanding is because of what you're doing here tonight, recognizing your champions and your heroes, and surrounding yourself with the very, very best people. We actually live in Hudson, Wisconsin now, we moved there about 20 years ago, and you notice right away that Hudson, Wisconsin is not Edina. Most of the businesses in Wisconsin, along with their main line of business, also have a sideline. For instance, you might have an accounting office that also sells cheese, or has a tattoo parlor attached to it, or maybe does taxidermy or something like that. So they have a main business and a sideline business. There's not a lot of culture in that regard, but one of our favorite businesses is a, it's on Wisconsin 35, heading south to River Falls, and he's a veterinarian that doubles as a taxidermist. And their motto is, "Either way, you get your pet back." So that's one of the differences between Edina and where we live now. But, just listening to your remarks, I think it's plainly evident to everybody here and everybody that's hearing these words, why Bill Webb would be our recipient of this award. As Paul said, this is a peer-nominated and chosen position, but the example that you have set, first of all, of teaching at every level and teaching at the very highest level, and your irrepressible good cheer and faith and tenacity and perseverance and reliance and professionalism, it just is, it's boundless. And so there is no more deserving person that could have received this award. It's a privilege for us to give it to you and for you to be the first recipient of this, so, thank you very much. Thanks for everything that you've done, you know, we appreciate it, and the kids that you've taught for all these years appreciate it, and all of us whom you've inspired appreciate it. So, bravo, bravo to Bill Webb, and to Edina Schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Thank you, Paul, thanks for coming. Bill, thank you, congratulations.
Did you get a good picture? You want to, um, did you want one, like, for the board too? No, that's, no, okay, I guess, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure you got the whole group. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You need a turn.
Second? Yes. Take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did have one member of the audience who asked to speak this morning, Jim Nunn. Like to speak on behalf of Playworks.
Just have to grab the mic, Jim, and you can sit right down. You're on.
Just a little background, we do welcome members of the public to come and speak. Each presentation is limited to three minutes, and we just welcome you and appreciate you sharing your thoughts.
Superintendent Dressen and school board members, my name is Jim Nunn. I've been a member of this community as of Halloween 26 years. I've had three sons who've come through Edina Schools, or mostly. My older son, Jimmer, graduated in 2011. My second son, Timmy, passed away the summer between his ninth and 10th grade year, and my third son, Matthew, is now a sophomore at Edina High School. I wanted to come and talk a little bit about Playworks, not in support or against it, but I just want to challenge you to additional thought when it comes to it. I'm a teacher in the Minnetonka Public Schools, elementary. Our school is piloting the program for the first time. I've heard from our parents pretty similar stuff as what I've read on Facebook and different things from Edina parents. I just want to challenge you from this thought. My son, Jimmer, went to Concord, great experience. My son, Matthew, went to Concord, great experience. He dominated football, loved recess. My son, Timmy, that was a different story. Recession was painful. It was difficult, he wasn't a football player, he wasn't this, he wasn't that, he really, really did not enjoy recess. What I'm seeing at Minnetonka with our Playworks is an opportunity for those kids to be encouraged to be involved, not demanded to be involved, but encouraged to be involved, and I support that fully. I'm on the, I'm out with my class several times when recess is beginning. The Playworks staff with us, our pairs who've been trained in it, they've really been encouraging to get kids to try things. Give you an example, we had two young students last week that wrote a play during recess. They didn't play with a ball, they wrote a play. So it's an opportunity for them to still be creative, still be expressive in things that they would like to do, it's just a matter of how it is implemented. Our school, it's changed a little bit from the beginning to now, has a pilot program should. It has grown with things that are needed and things that were not necessarily have been taken out. My only challenge to you is, please, please, as you make a decision on this and you're dealing with people, think of the kids like Timmy, that recess caused a stomach ache. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next up, we have our audit presentation.
Ask Margot Bach to frame this for us and welcome Bill, and let them take it away.
Good evening. So we're well on the way into the 15-16 school year, but we are, we have completed our audit and reporting on the 14-15 school year. Want to thank the business office staff and Bill's team for all their work on the audit, and Bill's team in particular, helping us through, we were short-staffed this year and maybe had a few more questions than usual, but we got it done on time and to the usual finance committee on time, and we're happy to report good news today, a good audit report. Couple things, and I won't steal all of Bill's report, just in summary, is that we performed better and we received special ed aid a little bit higher than we have in, for the previous year, we always are very conservative with our estimates. Our enrollment was down a little bit from projected, and we also have follow-up enrollment information for 15-16, so it's good we're coming out in a little bit better position than projected. It was a better winter last year, and so that always helps with utilities and snow removals and all that helps a little bit, and I always hope for another good winter, but, you know, sometimes I'm right and sometimes I'm wrong. Workers' comp was a little bit better and a variety of other areas. Special ed tuition costs, we brought some contracted services in-house and that helped too, so a combination of things. All in all, good, and there's one finding that we've had in previous years that we do not have this year, and I'm happy to report in appreciation to the business office staff for this, and staff out in the sites, and that's a payment of accounts payable bills within the statute required within 35 days. And I know that's part of your report, but I do want to acknowledge, not just the business office staff, but also say, it takes everybody getting that approval in to get those payments in a timely manner. And so with that, I'll pass it on to Bill and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Margot. Superintendent?
For taking the time on your agenda for me this evening. As Margot mentioned, I thought that the audit process went very smoothly, especially considering the amount of turnover that you did have in the business office. Things were in the usual great shape when we got here, everything that we were looking for for the audit was prepared, timely, and correct as usual. So, the first thing I will go over is just what our role is, is to remind you what we do as auditor and how it differs from the responsibility of management. The primary document you receive is your annual financial statement. The data and disclosures of that document is a responsibility of district management. We come out and provide our audit process, and provide the opinion that goes at the front of that document. In addition to that, because the district earns annually more than half a million dollars of federal awards, you're subject to a separate audit of those federal award expenditures. We test internal controls and compliance at three different levels. First of all, at the financial statement level, second of all, as part of that federal single audit, and third, you're subject to an audit of your compliance with state laws and regulations. And finally, because the board has elected not to keep your extracurricular student activity accounts under board control, in which case they'd be within your general fund, but instead, they are issued in a separate report which you also receive, we provide an opinion on the cash activity in those student activity accounts, and also I'll look at controls and compliance on that level. As far as the results, to echo Margot's sentiments, I think it was a very positive report for the district. Once again, we were able to provide a clean opinion or unmodified opinion on your basic financial statements, that's the highest opinion that we can give. We also issued a clean opinion on your schedule of federal awards expenditures, that they're fairly stated in relation to those basic financial statements. From an internal control and compliance standpoint, we had no control or compliance findings to report, either on the financial statement level, on the federal single audit level, or on the Minnesota compliance level, so a very, very positive report. As far as the student activities, we did give a clean opinion on your student activity, cash receipts and disbursements. We do bring to your attention, this is on a different basis of accounting than your district financial statements, it's on a cash basis, and that we only opine on the recorded cash receipts because you don't have the same controls in place out of the building sites where they're accounting for these, as you do in your district financial office, to assure that all receipts have been included in what's being audited. So we mentioned that from an internal control standpoint. And we did have one compliance finding to report here, four of the receipts that we pulled for testing were not deposited in what we considered to be a timely manner. This is an area that's kind of gone back and forth with state guidance, they've actually loosened up in this area a little bit. It used to be if you held any student activity receipts over a weekend, it was considered to be not a timely deposit. Now, there's a little more discretion, but in the case of the four receipts we tested, all were held for at least two weeks, and one was for a month, and we consider that to be something that you should be getting to the bank more often, mostly from a safeguarding of assets standpoint there. And as Margot mentioned, following up on something we reported last year, by far the most common finding that we have in our school district audits is districts not paying all of their disbursements within that 35-days window that you have from either receiving the goods or services, or the invoice for goods or services. And that has been a finding for your district last year, but we're happy to report all of the disbursements that we pulled and tested this year were paid in a timely manner, so that was not a finding for Edina for 2015. Any questions on any of the opinions or report letters before I move on to some of the financial information? Seeing none. This first graph is from our management report. It takes a look at your unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of your unrestricted expenditures. This is a calculation that the state uses to calculate statutory operating debt. It's not a ratio that you look at that often, because it's fairly specialized, it takes out all of your restricted category expenditures like operating capital and so forth, but it's one where we do have a statewide benchmark to throw up there for you to compare where your district is. At the end of 2014, statewide school districts had about 21.2% of their unrestricted expenditures and their year-end fund balance. By comparison, Edina had about 18.3%. By comparison, UDNF had about 18.3%. That ratio increased for 2015 for your district to about 21.4%. So, you were at the end of 2015, right about where the statewide average was at the end of the previous year. And drilling down within that to your primary operating fund, your general fund, ended the year with a total fund balance of about $18.8 million. That was about 3.2 million higher than the previous year and about 3.9 million better than projected in your budget. The unrestricted portion of that fund balance was about 17.4 million and the blue bar represents your cash and investments at year-end. That was about $30.2 million at the end of 2015. That was up about 4 million. And you can see the yellow bar representing your fund balance has been a nice, slow, steady growth trend there while that cash has kind of been all over the place. Over the last three years, you've seen the state essentially buy back some of the cash flow borrowing tools they were using in 2012 when the state's financial condition was troubled. So, the tax shift buyback and the metering of your state aid payments, you're now back to receiving 90% of your estimated aids paid to you in cash by June 30th, where that was actually down to 60% back in 2012. So, your, your cash flow position has greatly improved over the last three years. In fact, I think you were doing short-term borrowing all the way into your 2013 fiscal year because of the amount of cash the state was essentially borrowing from the district. And that is no longer an issue. Hopefully, going forward, it will continue not to be. Here's some of the numbers behind that fund balance. Breaks down your general fund, fund balance over the last three years into the various elements of fund balance. The $18.8 million, I said, in total. You see there, the non-spendable fund balance of about $149,000 represents prepaid expenditures. It's still an asset to the district, but you can't spend it on something else, so it gets separated into a different category there. Your restricted fund balances are about $1.2 million. And then the unrestricted pieces, there's committed and assigned, which are essentially earmarked either at the board level or at the management level for various things that the district wants to earmark those dollars for. And then the unassigned, which is about $10.2 million. The unrestricted, which is those last three categories, was about 18.8% of your total general fund expenditures for the year. So, it's a little lower percentage than the one I mentioned before because here we're taking all of your general fund expenditures into the calculation. And that unassigned piece, the $10.2 million, represented about 11% of your annual expenditures. One of the primary things that drives your funding formulas is the number of students that the district serves from year to year. For 2015, you served an average daily membership of about 8,449 students, which was an increase of 14. The pupil units that that generates after it goes through the state weightings, that process changed significantly for 2015. The state compressed and simplified those pupil weights quite a bit, actually reducing them. And that was offset, they gave you $529 increase on the general education basic formula, 424 of which was to offset that compression. So, it was supposed to essentially hold you harmless there for the changing in the pupil weights, but it does make it hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison to year, from year to year. So, I've got an extra bar here. Your pupil units for aid this year were 9,253, which is a decrease of 517 from the year before. If you were using the prior year's weights to calculate that, it actually would have been 9,802, which would have been an increase of 32. So, that, that drop of 517 was entirely due to that change in the weightings that the state applies to that to calculate your pupil units. And this is a, just another graph showing the change from year to year. You see that 5.3% decrease, which is kind of artificial there, and the green bar shows where you would have been if they hadn't made that change, just to give you some context. And your general fund revenues for 2015 were about $95.8 million, which is about 1.1 million, roughly 1.2% better than budget. That was primarily, that variance was primarily in three places. Your property tax revenue was about $430,000 over budget. Part of that is you budget fairly conservatively for cancellations and tax abatements and delinquencies. Those came in better than expected. And also, there's some other tax-related revenues that you receive. Access tax increments from cities closing down, tax increment districts, county apportionments on penalties and interest, things like that, that came in a little stronger than you had projected. Your state revenue was about $375,000 over budget. Most of that, as Margot alluded to earlier, was in the special education state aid area. And your other local revenues were about $410,000 over budget. Again, here, I think this is mainly a conservative budgeting practice here that some of the revenue sources in here like gifts and student fees and investment income are fairly hard to project, so you're pretty conservative with how you budget that area. Revenues were about $4.1 million higher than the prior year. Mainly, that was an additional general education aid and state special education aid. It's a little deceptive looking at the change in the bar graph there because in 2014, state actually bought back about the last $3.7 million of that tax shift, which didn't give you any extra money, but it shifted money from property taxes to state aid. So, that's a little deceptive from year to year there, looking at the bars. On the expenditure side, you spent about $92.5 million in the general fund in 2015. That was about 2.7 million or almost 3% under budget. That was primarily in three areas. Your purchase services were $618,000 below budget. Most of that came in the special education area where you started serving more students in-house rather than contracting for some of those services. The other two areas were supplies and materials, where you were about $700,000 under budget, and capital, where you were about $875,000 under budget. Both of these had a lot to do with the amount of site allocations that went unspent and were carried over, available for those sites to spend in the next year budget, also due to the timing of some of your capital projects in the, in the capital area. And actually, I think the amount of, of site allocation carryovers was higher than usual because of some of the construction that you have going on at your school sites. Expenditures were about 1.8 million or roughly 2% higher than 2014. Almost all of that increase was in salaries and benefits, which were about $2.5 million higher than the previous year. Part of that was your normal contract increases and inflation in benefits, but also you increased staffing due to the number of pupils served and also the implementation of the all-day kindergarten coming into your general fund in 2015. Purchase services offset some of that. They were about $750,000 under last year. Once again, that was mainly in the special, special education area. Your other operating funds, the food service fund, ended the year with a fund balance of about $718,000, which was an increase of a little over $100,000, about $72,000 higher than projected in your budget. Both revenues and expenditures in this fund were about $2.9 million and both were under budget, revenues by about $512,000 mainly in meal sales, expenditures by about $584,000 mainly in food costs and supplies. And this was primarily due to a change in the offerings that you had through your food program. You had a, a higher percentage of students purchasing the regular school lunch meal rather than à la carte. So, your à la carte sales were down and those regular, lower-priced meals revenues were up. The community service fund ended the year with a fund balance of about $1.2 million. That was an increase of $35,000 and you had actually assumed about a $400,000 spend down in your budget. So, revenues in this fund were about $7.1 million and expenditures were about $7 million. The revenues were $581,000 over budget mainly in your tuition and fees and expenditures about $185,000 over budget, kind of spread across a number of areas. Both of these were down about $800,000, excuse me, from the prior year. And this again was primarily due to the all-day kindergarten moving from a fee program and your community service fund into the general fund. Finally, this is a very condensed version of your statement of net position. This is that additional set of financial reporting essentially that you have at the front of your financial statements where all of your fund information is wrapped into a single presentation. It brings in all of the long-term capital assets, depreciation, debt payable that is not reported within the funds. One of the reasons I wanted to highlight this in, for 2015 is because you did have a significant accounting change that took place for 2015. You had to implement governmental accounting standards, Board Statement 68, which is employer reporting for pension plans. So, what happened here is for 2015, you are now reporting your proportionate share of the unfunded pension liability for both the PERA and TRA statewide pension plans. That resulted in a, an adjustment to your beginning net position of almost $69 million. It's a reduction of that unrestricted net position that you see on the bottom line there. So, your total net position decreased by about $60 million from the previous year. However, it's a little deceptive because the majority of that, about $69 million, was that implementation, that, that adjustment for the implementation of GASP 68. Your current year operating, operations actually increased net position by almost $9 million. Of, of the elements of net position at the bottom there, your net investment in capital assets went up by about $5.5 million. You've seen that area grow considerably over the last few years. That's typically driven by the relationship of how fast you're depreciating your assets versus how quickly you're repaying the debt you issued to build those assets. But with your district, you've had some alt facilities levies and capital project referendum levy money where you're adding capital assets without issuing additional debt. So, you're actually seeing that part of your net position go up quicker than the average district is there. Restricted net position went up by about 1.1 million, mainly that's in fund balances that are held for debt repayment and future capital projects. And then that unrestricted portion, you see the drop of $66 million. That's where that GASP 68 implementation hit you. That was everything I had intended to cover from a financial standpoint. Questions? Anything you wanted me to get into further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can remind the public that Bill and his team was, been very involved throughout August and September, but I did report the same findings to our finance board committee earlier this month.
Can you talk a little bit more about that change in accounting for the shift of the $60 million? Are financials going to be viewed differently in the future because of that shift and, you know, credit ratings, things like that? Is there anything that's going to be an impact as a result of that? I understand it's legislatively driven. Isn't like the financials have changed, just how you're accounting for it?
Yeah, it's really not even legislatively driven. It's actually national accounting standards driven. What this is, those, those first two financial statements in your report are an attempt to essentially report on a full accrual basis as, as a for-profit company would. So, a lot of these changes that have been trickling in over the last decade or so have been to align governmental accounting with that kind of commercial world accounting. And essentially, this is something that, you know, for-profit companies with pension plans have had to have on their books for years, although typically in their cases their own pension plan. So, if it's, if it's underfunded, it's truly their liability. In this case, this was really something that, that's kind of out there, but from the standpoint of a potential liability of the, the district, I don't really see anything changing. The amount that you're paying through your general fund is, is based on the salaries that you pay that are eligible, are the employees that are eligible for those plans each year. And they have been tinkering a little bit with those percentages to try and squeeze down that unfunded liability, but it, unless something absolutely catastrophic happened, they're not going to go out of business tomorrow and, and send bills to each of the districts to pay in their proportionate share. But it is something you now have to reflect as liability on those entity-wide statements. As far as, as the public perception, bond rating agencies have known these liabilities have been out there for years and years. They've taken allowances in for that effect. So, I don't really see this being anything that should have a great impact in that area. As far as the public perception is concerned, you may have few people that are actually interested enough to look at your financial statements in that kind of detail, may have some questions there, but you know, really the, the fund-based statements, which is how you manage your district, how you budget, really didn't change for this. It's just that top layer of reporting, so I don't see it having a huge impact.
I think what we have to do locally is explain what we control, what you as a board control, that we're meeting the requirements certainly with the report, but what, what's under the board control. And, and as Bill said, the rating agencies are familiar with this, but it, I'm sure it will be a question in future ratings and we'll be prepared to answer.
Thanks again, Bill.
Next, we have our leadership update.
Just again, highlight some of the strategic work that we're moving forward with. It's been a busy fall with a lot of activities going on, a lot of our programming often launched and a lot of successes continuing to evolve. We're moving into that season of fall competitions and performances at all the levels, parent-teacher conferences, so it's a busy time of the year. Some of our strategic priorities, next month, we'll be bringing forward to the board recommendation as relates to our data dashboard for students, staff and families, taking a look at a new student information system, where we've been working hard on that. And we'll be bringing that forward for board action. We're also taking a look at redefining our district assessment plan and coming up with next-gen assessments, so really making sure the assessments we're doing are aligned to the learning and are very purposeful. Around our second major goal area, just want to highlight the school calendar. The board did have a work session earlier this, this evening where they received a report from the calendar committee, just talking and getting more input from the board before they bring recommendations. They got extensive input from the community and staff through a survey. A lot of good information was shared, that data was collected and will continue to move us forward. The committee will probably go back and reexamine the options that they have and refine those and bring them back for board discussion at the November meeting. We'd be looking for board action in December. And finally, the next-gen funding plan, this audit really allows us to move forward now with taking a look at a three-year funding plan, especially with some of the changes going on as a result of our successful referendum on construction. We want to make sure we have, we're in a fine, strong position for the launching in the fall of 2017. So, Margot Bach and I, in fact, spent this afternoon doing some shaping around that work and we'll be updating the board later yet this 2016 year on those plans. And finally, under the partnership piece, this whole thought of professional learning is a big theme of ours and Randy Smazl and his team are moving forward with a formal plan that really does a nice job of aligning all of our performance with our new learning as well as some of the new initiative work. And we'll be receiving more information on that as we look to the future. We do have a report that, I'm going to ask Mary Manfield and Margot Bach to come forward and just kind of highlight, annually, we bring an update to the board on our student enrollment counts and class size. We've historically also done it around our facilities, but with all the changes going on in facilities, I'm going to ask Margot and Mary, Mary, just to focus on, a little bit on enrollment and class size, which is again, in a report that is for information only, it's not a board action. it's not a board action item.
Good evening. So we have, you've probably been accustomed to us presenting a much larger report on enrollment in facilities. We did reduce it. You'll be hearing a lot about facilities in the upcoming months and and year as we're re- reconfiguring buildings. But as as you look at just comparing enrollment from 2014 to 2015, you'll note that there's a change of a twenty-six decrease in the elementary, and one of the biggest pieces where that lies is with our kindergarten. As you remember, we came came to the board in May and asked to raise the kindergarten class size from eighteen, in eighteen to twenty-two range, to twenty to twenty-four, with capping it at twenty-two. We came in right at twenty-two point three, but the enrollment went from five seventy-four kindergarteners last year to five hundred and fifty-four this year. Now, we do have one less kindergarten class at Cornelia, which we knew based on enrollment that that could that could happen. First grade also, even though we have an additional section of first grade at Cornelia, our first grade numbers from last year to this year are a difference of twenty, twenty-four also, from six eleven to six eighty-four. So first in kindergarten and first grade are small in relation to the rest of our rest of our elementary grades. Middle school, you'll also recall that you as a board officially closed grades six, seven, and nine. All three of those grades did come over projection. Our seventh grade is our largest grade in our school system right now. It has six hundred and ninety-four students in seventh grade. High school looks like it's down a little bit. That had more to do with a very large graduating class that last year, I think of six, six ninety-two was in last year's graduating class. This year's graduating class is about six fifty-three. So you see the net difference of four students. Over the next five years, you can see that we're really projecting very, very flat enrollment. That can be, again, that can change somewhat based on our numbers of open enrollment students. I I would note, though, though one of the slides does not say this, that we have approximately thirteen hundred and twenty-eight students, or fifteen point eight percent of our students are open enrolled, and it would be in your, in the packet that you have for information. But we also have approximately fifteen hundred and thirteen Edina School District residents that are attending school elsewhere. So we have more Edina school, school students that are leaving than we are right now presently bringing into open enrollment. Now, it could be that we are doing a better job of collecting information than we have in the past, or it could be just we have a few more students choosing something else. But if all those students were attending, you know, the difference is really seventeen point five percent of of our students are attending elsewhere.
Just to tap into what Mary said on the enrollment side, as you, I convert the enrollment count into average daily membership projections. The projections follow similarly in that high school slightly down and kindergarten, and overall, the average daily membership is slightly down from what I projected in fifteen sixteen. But we'll, I look at it monthly. Mary and I talk more than that, and and that'll be part of the update to the final budget for fifteen sixteen, but just a little bit down there. And then here's a breakdown by school for estimates for two years. You typically, we give you a five-year projection by school, but because there is so much conversation around facilities, just really felt, even though there's more detailed information in your packet, that we're really focusing on the next two years until we move forward with some facility changes and ninth grade moving to the high school. So in summary, the elementary school enrollment is projected to decrease over the next five years. That's with an assumption, conservative assumption for kindergartners, because that's what we've seen in the last couple of years. And harkening back to the March 2014 demographic study, we are on the low side of the, there's four projections in the study, on the low side of the kindergarten projections. So it may mean, looking at the open enrollment data, whether it's kindergarten or other grades, we may need to look at, look at that in the future, but we take that on a grade-by-grade, year-by-year basis. Secondary enrollment is projected to increase over the next five-year period, and so overall, net K-12 enrollment growth is relatively stable, basically flat, but increasing, slightly increasing over the next five years. And so we continue to use projection models and study not only enrollment and average daily membership from a fundy's standpoint, but what about building capacity? Certainly, this is a conversation as we are modifying our facilities, and then also looking at our programming as well. Any questions?
Can you just explain how when we're down, say, at Class App Cornelia, for example, in kindergarten, how then that projects through the years of K-12 with a particular graduating class? Or do you find that then maybe in subsequent years, we have enrollment, new resident enrollment that kind of, you know, starts building those numbers back up?
So it it sometimes can. The model looks at previous year's history, and there's, the transitional grade levels are the grades that we typically will get, you know, your sixth grade, your ninth or tenth grade, depends on our grade configuration, so that's why some of this is a little, little unique this year, and it will be again next year. Sometimes, historically, when we had a half-day kindergarten, we would see a transition in first grade. We're seeing less of that now.
I think the other piece is Cornelia has the same amount of sections. They just added a first-grade section. So they have five first-grade sections, because if you recall, last year, they had very, very large kindergarten classes, and we were providing some additional para help, and with their move-ins, it it resulted. They have the same sections, they just have three in kindergarten and and five in in first grade.
And so will that kind of, well, like that larger section, that's the first-grade graduating class, will just kind of keep moving through that, being slightly having one extra section, like we do throughout the year?
You know, I think that's going to depend on, again, mobility within that particular building and that particular grade as we go up through the grades, class size ranges increase from, you know, range of twenty-two to twenty-four to twenty-four to twenty-six. So I think that one is going to really bear watching. It's probably the, it's definitely the first time in my time that we have moved away from having that traditional standard amount of sections at each building at each grade, where Concord has five at each grade regardless of size. Cornelia's had four, Highlands, et cetera. So this is the first time we've really adjusted based on the number in a building.
Mary, looking out, are you seeing any need to look at boundaries between schools within the district? Or are those serving you pretty well as far as how you're able to balance out each of the sites?
You know, I think if you if you go back and look, especially at the elementary, you you see ranges from, you know, a low of the smallest, you know, six, five sixty-one to seven thirteen, and I think the piece with Cornelia was, or I'm sorry, Concord. Concord was really built to accommodate five sections at each grade. The question will be with some of the new dwellings on the, I guess it would be the southwest, southeast side of Edina, in the Cornelia attendance area. Those are going to, right now, they're not projected to necessarily be family dwellings, but if we start getting families in there, I don't believe at this point we would be needing to talk about boundary shifts.
Thank you. Additional questions from Mary?
Quick question. So I know I got an email from a parent saying that they thought that the open enrollment in some of the classrooms is high as thirty percent. We have a fifteen point eight percent average over the district. So where are we at peak within a particular classroom? Do you know?
You know, I don't know in a particular classroom. I think that's a good question, and I could sure check. I think our largest, so the high school, I think, is probably at about twenty percent of of their total building at open enrollment. I I I don't know that I could say we have a particular classroom at thirty percent, but I will be more than happy to check on that information, provide that to the board. I think one of the pieces that Margot consistently reflects back to me about is that we really want to look at the the open enrollment in totality as opposed to a specific building, a specific grade, or even a specific classroom, you know? So I'm not sure is a classroom a elementary classroom, or would it happen to be a high school class? And so those could be very, very different. But again, I would be happy to provide additional information if you would like to email me, and I will, I will do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
Just a quick update again for the community that we are continuing to move forward with our next-gen construction plan. We have finished the first phase of the schematic drawings at the high school, and they're actually moving through their user groups, so it really ends points two and three of the schematic design work, and we'll be finishing that up over the next week. The middle school begins their schematic work tomorrow. They've had one initial meeting, but then they'll continue to work on establishing criteria that will help shape their schematic drawings. Remember, that construction would not begin until the summer of 2017, early spring. Elementary schools have completed their first round of schematics, and are now starting to work on their design drawings and more at the site levels. We have three elementaries that will begin their construction and improvements yet this spring, and then the other three schools will move next summer in 2017. Our early childhood programming will also begin their work this week, and their plans too will be for the summer of 2017. As we look at the drawings, this is kind of the themes that we're starting to see, that the schools will have that commons area, kind of that center point in the school where it is what the once was the media center, but this is the learning commons area. So it will be a student resource center as well as a student production center. So it'll be some common spaces for learning. Outdoor play is another big part of the work, and so they're preparing to make sure we have outdoor play, places for students beyond the traditional playground, but just some learning spots as well. And then within the classrooms, every classroom area also has some extended learning options. So they continue to have that main classroom area, but then they can break out into some extended learning areas. While that is the general theme of all the six schools, I would say each kept their own culture in their design work and are doing some refinement, but a big thanks to World Architect for being able to manage six different voices and yet come up with still having that common thread, which is important for continuity and fidelity in our learning. We've had some targeted studies in the area of special education and are starting to wrap that up. I mentioned a little bit earlier, media and library services, shifting that to a different look. We're also having some user groups around athletics and activities, so really starting to define the green spaces, outdoor turf fields, and how we'd be using those. Also taking a look at the activities and athletic fields at the West Campus, where both the middle school and high school will be with the addition of ninth grade, how we can manage those. Community education, working harder with them and listening to some of their needs that they have, both before and after school and during the summer months at our school sites. Guidance counseling is another area, as well as environment, and continuing to say, how can we make sure we're going green? As a school district, that is green, but also that opportunity for educational green. And so while solar power may not be an option for us, there is a place for solar power as it relates to education. And so we're looking at that along the way. This is a schematic drawing again of the media center, but just talks to, these, these are bubble drawings, obviously, but still the importance of having that quiet space and the place for books, a place of reading, but then the, some of the specialized spaces for production and not only doing the research, but actually doing some of the early production work. So it's kind of that maker space that we've heard a lot about. It's a movement. We're excited about this because it does really align well with our next-generation plans. It also, we're one of the first school districts nationally that really is taking a look at all of our media centers district-wide to make sure we have a continuum of of services that will meet our learners today and into the future. Just a little bit on the site side, the schematics were approved in, at the October board meeting. And then finally, again, a reminder, from a leadership standpoint, we have elections coming around the corner early November. We have seven outstanding candidates for three spots that would be in their offices on January one, 2016. With that, that concludes the update for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Dressen. Moving on to our consent agenda, can I get a motion, please, to bring that to the table?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our modify consent agenda with item D being removed. Rick, could you please walk us through those items?
I will do that. We have our personnel recommendations, as well as our expenditures payable for October. We do have renewal rates for our employee health insurance, and that's in the board packet tonight. Again, reminder that the annual report of professional learning was that pulled from the agenda. We will refine that. We had some errors that we wanted to correct and modify, and we'll bring that back at the November board meeting. We have some minor calendar adjustments at the high school. This gets around May term and some of the testing. It's an annual adjustment that we make once the school year begins. We have that all finalized with assessments and everything else. There were some changes over the legislative session, which caused a delay in that. We have a new activities program that will be moving into action at the high school called World Quest. It's a competitive team. It's taking a look at world events, and it's exciting, another option for students to be engaged in activities and building a lot on their 21st century skills, but also expanding their skills and talents in the world in the area of world events. We've got a contract approval for NWA or our MAP testing. This is an annual approval of the board. Finally, we recognize Bill Webb once again. We have a variety of gifts of, again, generous donors giving to our PTOs and PTAs who then in turn forwarded on to the school district. And then we have field trips going on, and that would conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda or have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our action items. The first item is our financial statement, which we had a presenter, presentation earlier this evening. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept our financial statements for fiscal year on June thirtieth, 2015. Any discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the statements as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our superintendent's performance goals. Can I get a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's performance goal for 2015, sixteen. Any discussion, questions, or comments? The HR committee discussed these, and anybody else want to touch on those? All those in favor of approving the superintendent's performance goals as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have our schedule review of policies. Item C, we've seen these all before. Can I get a motion to bring those all to the table?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to bring policies six twelve, six seventeen, six twenty-seven, and six twenty-eight to the table. Any changes or discussion, or who'd like to walk us through?
Just a couple of notes. Policies six twelve and six seventeen have no changes from when we looked at them the last time. Six twenty-seven, there are just a couple of notes that the board discussed after review from Troy Stein, the athletic director. So just a little reordering of language in section two, and then in section eight of six twenty-seven, there's a correction to the high school credits that are required for participation and adjustment in the language immediately following that about the action if a student fails to meet the credit requirement progress. In six twenty-eight, there are, again, a few changes from when we looked at this the last time the board saw it was at the July twentieth meeting. The two sections that I would call attention to is just some new text in section seven A about eligibility, and then a new paragraph C, so section seven, paragraph C. And then a new paragraph C, so section seven, paragraph C adds language about accommodations for students with special needs.
Paige, was that Regina, do you have the?
I'll give you a page. So it's section 7C, let me scroll down. Scroll back up. It begins on 353 of the board packet and then it continues to 354.
Thank you.
And then Kathy and Lisa, what did I miss?
No, I think you hit the highlights. Oh, that one appendix, I think, from that one that talked about exceptional middle school athletes. The, it was just, the policy language was tightened up a little bit to conform to where they're really doing it at the high school.
Any additional discussion or questions related to any of the policies that are up for approval? Seeing none, and all those in favor of approving the four policies as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Got some information items, some announcements, additional items?
I know November will be a busy month for the board. We've got a variety of work sessions, we'll be bringing forward schematic drawings of middle school and, or excuse me, of our elementary schools. We'll also have a variety of policies that we'll be bringing forward for board discussion in November. So we will get that ready to go and have a busy November, but I think we're set for October.
Thank you, Rick. Any additional committee announcements or reports? Any other additional items? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved and seconded to adjourn, any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned, thank you all.